July thirty is six P M at Town Hall Complex, Batesburg, Leesville, South Carolina. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Hartley if you would do an indication for us, please.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to talk to your people. We thank you all that those in our God who made the decision for us to give them the wisdom to do justly according to all your people. We give you a praise, honor, and in Jesus' name we make it.
Yeah, thank you. At this time, stand if you're able for the voice of Jesus led by Mr. Wise.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Approval of the agenda, item four of the motion to approve. Mr. Powell, Pryce, and I have a second by Mr. Faulknight, any discussion? District one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Seven.
Yes.
Eight.
Yes.
Any votes yes, motion carries. New business presentation and discussion of water and wastewater projects. We have several bullet points here this evening. We have Joint Municipal Water Sewer Commission connection project update, connection two to system two. We have project Horton, which is North Fork Commerce Park wastewater treatment plant expansion and upgrades, wastewater treatment plant clarifier upgrade, water and sewer line replacement, water valve enhancement study, utility billing improvements. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Hendricks, to introduce our guests as they come up and each topic. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. This was a topic that got brought up really during the budget process of giving that update on all the different projects we got going on. So we'll just jump right into it. Mayor's already gone through that agenda, so there's the bullet points again, but that's on your agenda. I would like to say the TVs, big thank you to Michael Neese, our I T director. He made sure we got these TVs in place for the night's meeting to help with our presentation. A lot better than the old screen and projector. But just to review, some of you weren't on council when all of this happened. So again, this is the partnership between the town of Batesburg Lees and the Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission. The project is a twenty-four inch main that's coming from Coxbury Road near Lexington High School, coming down Highway one to Oldfield Road. That's the joint municipal portion and the water tank at that location. And from that point in, there's a pump station that belongs to us, sixteen inch main along Highway one that kind of snakes its way around out Bizarre Mill Road, Bernard Street, Trotter Street, North Lee Street, Francis Street, and terminates right near Starbuck's on Highway twenty-three. So that's, the longer route is a little bit more efficient. It was cheaper because of less utility issues to deal with. If you recall, when we did the bid process, we were very excited with the price that we got with fourteen point two five million, awarded ten million from Skip, four point two five state revolving fund, which is a forgivable loan for emerging contaminants. The project came in a bid price of ten million, three hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. And so that was opened in August of twenty twenty-three, and then council voted November thirteenth of last year to award that contract to the facilities. There's your kind of overview map of our portion. Our water just is the green area in that picture, and the red circle kind of shows where that current work has been occurring. And it shows that sixteen inch line going to the tank and pump station. Pipe was delivered in May, that began work in late May. So there were two crews that started along Bernard Street going different directions. One going up for Bizarre Mill, the other working into town. The crew working towards the center of town has completed Bernard and Trotter Streets, and they're nearly done with North Lee Street. They were born under North Lee Street today. They were actively doing that work, and they will soon be turning on Francis Street. So that crew has laid approximately seven thousand feet of line. The other crew was working up Bernard to Bizarre Mill. They have now turned on Old Columbia Road and estimate about fifty-five hundred feet that they have laid. They had run into some rock early on, but that seems to be just very isolated. And Joint Municipal, not to jump too much on theirs, but they did lay the foundation for that new water tank at Oldfield Road, and just last week, I think, started laying that twenty-four inch line from Coxbury and working back this direction. So their portion is also underway. Does anybody have any questions about?
The total length of the sixteen inch line?
Total length is twenty-one thousand, four hundred feet.
So they're approximately sixteen percent.
Yeah, they're making good time. My understanding from some of the crews is they expect to have all the line in the ground by the end of the year. So that's a lot of pipe. What was the total length, Bill? Do you remember what the total length count in Joint Municipal portion?
I don't know. There's a total length that is four thousand feet on Joint Municipal.
Okay.
Sixty-seven thousand feet.
Total.
Talking with the contractor today, the sequence of construction, they're trying to get all the buck of line in and then the horizontal direction of drills, you know, or whatever, and all that, that will be the last part and then the pump station. They're probably, according to what they're telling us, September timeframe, the side piping and all that, in anticipation of setting the pump station around the first.
And one another, the terms of the revolving loan, forgivable, do you mind the terms?
Well, so that was, and Bill may be looking for, in depth on that, it was, the emerging contaminants portion of it is to take care of the PFOS problem that our current plant has, and it's not capable of treating the water right now, but it's got the PFOS. So by time of the joint municipal, that's coming from the new plant that's on the lake that does not have a PFOS problem. So with that partnership, we were able to utilize that emerging contaminants money as our match towards the Skip. So.
But the terms of the loan, will we be paying any interest on that money?
No. It is forgivable loan.
Well, then it's going to be a grant.
Essentially, it's a grant. It's my understanding.
It is an S R F project. It's a principal forgiveness S R F project.
Principal.
Principal forgiveness.
Is there any interest involved?
Not that I would.
Guy is shaking his head. Guy, if you can, if you'd like an eyebrow, if you know.
They call it an S R F loan, because that's what the federal government requires you to call it an S R F loan. However, and they say it's principal forgiveness, it's a grant, but they can't say it's a loan. You do, the only way that you would pay interest or you would pay monies out is depending on how you pay that project off. So if you had some kind of bank qualified placement or something to have money sitting there so you could pay the contractor and then ask for reimbursement, and you could technically be paying interest in that timeframe, but I don't know how y'all are viewed in finances, but if you go ahead and get a pay app in and then make an application to a S R F, they would reimburse you, you would reimburse the contractor, then there's no money coming out of your account, it's just simply a pass-through phone. So that would be how y'all's finances work, to be able to save as money being called interest yesterday.
Okay, so minimal risk factor in terms of interest.
Yes, sir.
And that was the next part, was the actual payment process, like Guy noted. And that's why Guy and Jay from Joint Municipal are here, and Bill Warren, who's the engineer with Hayes and Sawyer, so that's why I'm referring to them. But the payment process, kind of like Guy said, the contractor submits that invoice to the engineers for review, line approval, it's in the town, they review it, sign off, then it goes back to the engineer who submits it to the infrastructure authority. They review it, they go ahead and make that payment, transfer the money to the town, and then the town cuts the check. I believe it's within seven days, we have to cut that check to the contractor. So a little bit of a process, but it's one of those checks and balances for the process. Payments so far, there have been three payment requests made, totally two million, six thousand, one hundred and three dollars and eighty-two cents. There was also a reimbursement for the engineering costs that was received, seven hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. That was received right at the beginning of July. That money went into the Belgium account. So so far, we have received two million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and eighty-two cents towards the project. And I don't know when, but there's another bill coming, I'm sure, very soon. Because that was a few weeks ago when we made that payment. And that's an example of one of the requested payment forms. Does anybody have any other questions about the current project before we move on? Like I said, I do know the goal, the expectation is we're going to have all the pipe in the ground by the end of the year. It's awesome. It is awesome. And it's a lot of pipe delay, and the S utilities is doing a great job. And then the bigger the delay, the bigger, longer the process of building that water tank. So I don't know if you had a timeframe, Jay or whoever, Bill, whoever might have an idea of that.
It'll be the end of next year before that tank is completed.
Yeah, the project is supposed to be completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. That's, what is the term, the complete, discompletion of the project at that point? Anybody have any other questions?
Contract, again, I guess I'm monopolizing, but the contract calls for a ready, water-ready system flushing the lines. Cost incurred there is already in the contract. You're going to be involved with several, probably million gallons of water to flush the lines.
I think, I think the question would be, as we transition to the system, we've got a new water source, how does that affect the existing distribution system and the water quality within the system?
How do we, how are we assured that the quality of the water that goes into the line at Coxbury is the same coming out of the line? So the lines have to be flushed after construction.
Correct.
That's going to involve a relatively large, and I'm sorry, I'm to the fifth decimal place dealing with five million part pieces or whatever, but I'm to the fifth decimal place, the cost of flushes and lines, is that included in the project?
That's, that's all the condition. You've got to deliver, you vote the water meets all standards.
So that's on joint, but no additional, additional cost, okay.
All right. All right, so no more questions about the current project, then we'll move on to the connection to system two. So as we are now pushing away with system one, Hayes and Sawyer has been working on engineering and has completed that to go from the new water tank site, the pump station at Oldfield Road near Highway one, and this would take it out Oldfield, left on Sewer Road, right on Windmill to tie into our existing water meter at Windmill and Orin Adams Road. This is where we currently buy water from Gilbert Summit Water and Sewer. So it would be transitioned from Gilbert Summit to Batesburg Leesville at that time. The twelve inch line going to that Windmill Road intersection, and then an eight inch line going down Windmill. The idea is that there's future expansion capability going out Windmill, or Sewer Road Part, pardon me, from that point.
Twelve inch?
Yes, off that twelve inch, you could continue that line going out eventually, you know, potentially looping that system as that lake area continues to grow. So, and Gilbert Summit, they're obviously dealing with a lot of residential roads, they're needing that capacity, and they have expressed to us that desire for us to get off the system.
Has our contract expired with them?
No, I do not believe it has expired, no.
But does it?
I don't know that there's an expiration date on that.
It's renewable in increments, and I have never seen a renewal of this, as a member of council.
We all have an eye. I know that the original contract was twenty fourteen, but I don't, I don't know the.
Original contract?
Well, the contract that I entered in twenty fourteen.
An update on twenty fourteen. Renewable in ten-year increments, so it's twenty twenty-four.
It's not.
My next question is, we're not replacing any lines between our current meter tap and Carver Watch.
Now, this does not include anything on the current system two.
We have a serious leakage prob, have had and appear to continue to have a serious leakage problem?
We've identified a major problem, but yes, it does still appear that there's some.
Well, looking at the numbers you provided us and the cost from Gilbert Summit, we're buying one heck of a lot more water than we're invoicing.
I agree with that. Our crews have tansome with, you know, trying to identify areas. I know that the big leak that was found in the fall addressed a lot of that problem, but there's still, there are still leaks in the system without. I agree with you on that.
Are we going to implement a project to find those leaks? I mean, we're talking, it's a few thousand or tens of thousands of dollars, but, and our usage has gone down. We were paying Gilbert Summit a peak of, I think the peak reached a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two, and for some reason, you say it's down to fifty. Actually, it was down to fifty-eight thousand last year, and using the normal computations of fourteen, thirty-one dollars and ninety cents for out of town meter tap, the initial tap, and we have two hundred and fifty-five taps. And then from there, you divide by six, eight dollars and a quarter, you come out with like sixty percent of what we're putting in one end is being invoiced on the other end? No wonder Gilbert Summit wants us out of the system for platform water in the ground. Do we have a plan to, do we have a plan to eliminate that loss?
So I have asked, I asked.
He typically gets interested in over fifteen percent shrinkage.
So we have tasked our utility distribution crew to be checking home lines in between, give them those big gap to see if there's any leaks that they can identify.
Have we considered an ultrasonic code?
That's possible, if we had.
Okay, I'm just, I'm looking out from the straight pairs.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On that twelve inch line that we proposed to put out there, the people that live along that route, are they going to be given the opportunity to buy, to purchase a tap on that line?
That's more of a bill. Is that, I know we had talked about the sixteen inch line is a transmission line, we're not so.
You can.
We can tap, we can tap twelve.
That line, if you have customers out there that want to go in on.
Well, do an open ditch tap.
Well, I've worked, I boot pump worked, it's a lot of fun. Out there, if you've got some areas where wells are failing or not a lot of water, and if they, if they have the opportunity to tap on, who's going to get the tap fee? Will that come to the town, or is that going to Joint Municipal? Now, that would be the town.
That would be the town's portion of the system, but that's for y'all to decide.
Yeah, and I do, I would have a question. Yeah, of course, it does go down the line, so the right side of that road is Gilbert Summit area, and the left side is the town. So there would be some questions that we would have to ask.
Well, we own the twelve inch line.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, it's not owned by Joint Mutual. We own the twelve inch line.
Okay. Fire line. Yeah. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that Gilbert Summit is in that area.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't say.
Yes, yes, if it's crossing Gilbert Summit, district, obviously, we have to have their permission to sell taps and can do it on a franchise fee.
Those things can be worked out. But, you know, I had asked the question months ago about the sixteen inch line, about taps, but those are, that is a transmission line, but the twelve and the eight are smaller than taps, so. All right. So we kind of touched on a little bit of this. We have three hundred and one meters that are on that system, two hundred and fifty-five are active. So that represents about eight percent of our current active accounts in town. And in the last twelve months, from July to June, we build one hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Just for your information, Gilbert Summit's current rate for us is two dollars per thousand. The Joint Municipal current rate would be a dollar ninety-four per thousand. And based off the contract, that calculation, bulk cost, which is currently a dollar thirty-three for Joint Municipal, times a kilowatt per thousand rate, which is, or adding, adding, not a point plan, about sixteen cents, and then multiplying by the thirty percent markup gives that dollar ninety-four. And our current rate for in-town is a dollar ninety-four, but I don't know that we have updated that since twenty twenty-two, so we might be a little bit higher than that. That might be a project for Tim to look at. So all of those prices are very comparable. So rolling into the funding side, this is something that, this is where the rubber meets the road, if you will. So remaining funds, skip funds from system one's project is two million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety cents. So that's the remaining grant money that is being allowed to be shifted over to the system two connection, leaving a cost to the town for a funding commitment letter of one million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Yeah, there's some engineering costs, but those are being paid already. That was part of previous contract, and so the funding commitment letter is for that one million, nine sixty-one, six, sixty-four, ten. And you do have hundred, you've got the scope of work, and you've got this, I believe that is on page four, if you want to look at that. So that's the amendment on the skip to ship that over from system one to system two. Anybody have any questions about that? As you see on the left side of that chart, it does show the current project. The original approvals are in there as well. So the total budget, seventeen million, nine thirty-eight, six hundred. So out of the system one and system two, we're talking about just under two million dollars funding commitment on this project. And I think maybe the last page is the page that's on the board. It shows that cost estimate for this amendment. So it works all the way through to system two water service connection, so from clearing and grubbing to the pipe, tire hydrants, all the fitting and connections. So that comes out to four million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars that has that twenty-five percent contingency in it. And then water treatment plant decommissioning, which is three hundred and twenty-two thousand with an eighty thousand contingency. So the grand total is four, four million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Again, of that, two million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety cents is Skip money.
Scope of the decommissioning project?
I'm going to defer to Bill on the scope of the decommissioning. We were talking about that earlier, but.
So that was vetted with both S R F and O R I A and at the time D A. Essentially is disconnecting the raw water, both raw water pump stations, it means the Brody Pond.
Could you speak here for a little longer?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's disconnecting the raw water pump station at the Brody Pond, and also disconnecting at, is it Lightwood, not Prey? Is that right?
Well, it's, yeah, at the pump station that.
At the, at the pump station, it, the way we looked at it was, is allowing the town to salvage material that they wanted to, or if they wanted to keep it, the meters, the pumps and all that, but disconnecting and salvaging that, and then removing the chemical feed facilities, the mechanical equipment, the flocculation and rapid mix, and then to prevent accumulating of water in the basins, pouring, pouring the basins to allow them to drain. Now, that's, that's the bare minimum, at that point in time, you guys can decide whether you want to repurpose the facilities, do something different, you know.
So it's not a ground level?
No, it's not a ground level, but I mean, there is an opportunity to repurpose those. You know, you've got concrete walls or something more to create, you know, shop space.
All right. Lines will still be in the ground?
Pipe will still be in the ground, but your mechanicals will be.
So basically, decommissioning, basically, we're not producing any more water, but the building will still be there. Anybody have any other questions about the cost estimate? Bill? If nobody has any more questions about the two water projects, I'm going to let Bill sit out here, he's in from out of town, and he's going to go have dinner with his son, so. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one for you. If we would choose to extend our water lines outside our town limits, particularly, say, now on U S number one, which may or may not be an avenue of expansion in the future as far as growth is concerned, it seems to be centered more to the northwest, northeast, and post-pioneering area. Do we have money with our current rate structure? Will we be able to fund lines outside our town to encourage annexation and additional?
I believe absolutely. But the great thing about what we are dealing with, I mean, this project that we were thinking was a twenty, twenty-two million dollar project a couple of years ago, we're getting for two million dollars. So we've got three point eight million dollars in local government investment pool, a lot of that is capital investment, or capital of the F train in that piece. So I believe that there's adequate money on hand to pay this without having debt, if that's the route that the council chooses, we're not in that form to get. But absolutely, we'll be in a position that we can do borrowing to grow that system, and I think that's, I think the Hollywoodwood corridor is absolutely going to be a very hot and core, a very near future.
As my concern is, you just addressed it slightly, being able to grow the system in case of industry coming in, which we would hope.
Yes.
We'd be able to have the capacity to accommodate, et cetera.
So the, the contract allows up to one point five million gallons a day, and so there's room and therefore that, that growth that we're hoping to see. We do have infrastructure in the industrial part, so, so we've got adequate sewer there and water. If there's a need for more water, we would, we would be able to run a line under Hollywood one from this new sixteen inch line, if, if there was a need for a significant.
Are we hoping that we get some industry in?
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you want industry, wait till you hear the next project.
And the next, well, the next buy-in. Since we still have Joint Mutual, the next buy-in improvement for Joint Mutual is?
The, so if, once we've reached that one point five million, and Jay, Jay and Guy, I'm looking at y'all, because y'all may be more familiar with that contract. I know one point five is where we are. Once we reach that point, the next step, what does that look like?
When you get to, in the contract, there's a percentage, it's at eighty percent or eighty-five percent of what your actual allocated capacity is, and we'll talk about how additional capacity works. The reason that we did that, just as a refresher for everybody, is when we first started talking about how this project was going to work, Ridge Spring was a thirty-five to forty percent customer of what the capacity is at, at Batesburg. And that, they're coming off of the system. And that, there coming off of the system, kind of emerged during the negotiation of the contract, so we reduced the amount from two and a half to one and a half with, with the caveat of being able to come back and talk about how the additional capacity will work. The deliverable itself, the, the infrastructure itself, will deliver at least two and a half million, probably could do some modifications and get more out of it, but it's designed to deliver two and a half million a day to the point itself.
And not to, to two joint municipals' horn, but we, they did work a good deal with us, but we did not have to buy capacity initially. So the next time, we will probably have to buy that capacity.
Right, so when we reach a peak, a single peak day of one point two million, that invokes the need to?
It's essentially, it's, um.
That's eighty percent of one point.
It's, uh, I think it's like a certain, and forgive me, I, I, I didn't read the contract last week, but I think it's, you see, three or five days within a thirty-day period. Is she reached, is it five?
Yes.
Within that thirty-day period, that's when we begin those discussions for additional capacity.
Yeah, it actually, so the wording is commission agrees to provide the town maximum water capacity of one million, five hundred thousand gallons of water per day. If the town exceeds eighty-five percent of this stated amount five times in a thirty-day period, parties will enter negotiations on the issue of raising the maximum daily capacity. If the daily maximum is exceeded, any amount over the maximum will be subject to an additional ten percent surcharge over the above price per thousand described below. The commission warrants that its systems shall be capable of providing two million, five hundred thousand gallons of water per day at your site.
And our one point five million buy-in was five million dollars?
It was zero to the town, they did not charge the town any for capacity.
Yeah, that, I mean, yeah, the no capacity purchase was the.
It's what made the deal work.
Absolutely. Yeah, the only cost we have in it is the cost of our pipe in the ground.
Floated initially was a five million dollar figure.
The value would have been floated initially. We, from our standpoint, that, those were, those were negotiating points early on, so yes, fair. Five million was, and because of the last expansion at the City West Columbus Water Plant, that was the valuation of a per gallon deal. So what I wanted, what I wanted staff at Batesburg Leesville to understand is what this value was that's on the table, that may not come out as a monetized event at the end of the contract. There is value that's being given to the town of Batesburg Leesville that was not included in terms of a dollar.
Monetary, it's a, okay.
Got a question about that sixteen inch line?
Yes.
Any provision being made to tie in Little Creek?
So we would just have to tap that line and, and run another main. We would have to bore that. So it is not built into the current plans, but that's been talked about, it would just be a, a tap for another main. So we can tap that line for main, or we're not going to tap it for, you know, red singles first. So, so we'll be able to branch off that line, be it Breezy Hill Road or, or Little Creek, so, yes, that, that's definitely contingent. But that's, that's not in this current scope of work. Any other questions? All right, so our next item, moving right along, is Project Courtney, which I think we can now, you know, safely call it North Fort Commerce Park. In March, council voted and, and approved to, to go into a memorandum of understanding of Aitken County regarding Project Courtney and this Commerce Park, which is all, it's going to be near I-20, near the exit thirty-three, so it's right up next to the Ensta River over towards exit thirty-three, between thirty-three and thirty-nine.
Is there a copy of that memorandum of understanding available to council?
Yes. I, I can print that out, or I can email it to everybody, so, yes.
Certainly would like to see a copy.
Yes. The proposal calls for one point five million gallon a day capacity in the VNL wastewater treatment plant. So the North Fort Commerce Park is a proposed one thousand eight hundred eighty-four acre site. For comparison's sake, our industrial park is a hundred and seventy-eight acre, so it's over ten times bigger than our industrial park. It's a massive project. So working with Thompson Hutton, and we've got staff here today to, to help us with that. Funding will be secured from different sources for a two point five million gallon a day expansion to the wastewater treatment plant, you know, with the associated upgrades as well. Funding will also be secured for the force main, that will transport wastewater from the park to the, the water, wastewater plant. There's associated pumps, but that is a, it's a seven hundred GPM pump. Design and permitting of the force main and pump station are underway and funded, not by us, but by other parties. And there will be no town financial commitment to this project, so that's obviously a huge thing. I've used the term as a win-win-win with the cherry on top, because the cherry on top is the economic development that will come with it. Just from your points of reference, at the October council meeting, you had the executive session came out, and we were directed to work on negotiations for Project Courtney. Then in March, it was voted eight and nothing to do the memorandum of understanding with Aitken County. Here's the route to that. Force main will come. You see the site kind of at the center, at the bottom of it, in the yellow outline, the green line going north to our wastewater treatment plant. And then this is just an overview of proposed layout, obviously. That's subject to change. I like to joke that I can draw little boxes and put them on a map, too, but, but that's, it is consensual, there you go, that's a nice professional word for it. But one thousand eight hundred eighty-four acres and over fifteen million square feet proposed in that, that industrial park. Industrial park, Commerce Park. I think the choice word is Commerce Park because it is more technology-driven.
Correct.
This is a private entity, not a government entity, sponsored park.
Now, this is.
No, Aitken County.
Aitken County.
Aitken County owns the property. They have secured, and, and do own all of the property now. They are in the process right now of, of initial projects for the development of the North Fort Commerce Park, which includes the entrance road, the monument signing, the monument signage.
Will they control the park?
Yes, sir.
They will have absolute control?
Yes, it is.
Aitken County government?
Aitken County, yes.
Absolute.
Yes, sir.
All right, and our current sewer capacity is?
Currently, we are at two point five million gallons, and so the PER, which is being paid for, for a lease, and however those funds, would take it to five million gallon capacity.
Yeah, and.
Which is the limit of our permit?
Permit?
No, not right now. So, and Jeff DeVessinette is here.
Hold on, you said that it's not the limit to have our permit?
No, not right now. That's where.
What's the limit about permit currently?
Two point five MGD.
Right.
We, the town requested what we call a wasteload allocation from DEHAC, was DEHAC, now DEES, last year, and at that time, given preliminary limits for three and a half and five MGD. As part of this project, we understand that, you know, we have to be able to, number one, get a comment for three and a half and five MGD.
Have you pulled a permit?
We're in the process of doing that.
When you say the process of doing that, tell me where you are.
Jeff, do you want to? This is Jeff DeVessinette, who used to be with DEHAC in charge of permitting, and he is, he's assisting us on other contracts on this.
So the town has already, through other firms, has already gotten DEHAC's kind of preliminary approval to go to five. In other words, what would the limits look like? So DEHAC's already said, at three and a half and five, we foresee that you could get a permit for those levels, and here's what the numbers would be. And that informs.
Can you send me that?
What's that?
Can you send me that?
Sure. Yeah, this is, you can send it to me, and then I can.
So they, they wrote a letter.
Copy of it. And you got that updated?
So DEHAC wrote a letter October of last year, saying, these are what the numbers we think look like at three and a half and five. And that informs the engineering design consideration. Well, if the limits of this, what would the design consideration be?
And the last time our community tried to expand that, every member of Sierra Club within a five hundred mile radius showed up at our door. Dumping in Chickapin Creek is going to be an extremely sensitive issue.
Yeah, I was, I was at that, I was at that public.
And you know better than.
That's why Jeff's here.
We have to deal with the public relations.
That's right, so that, you know, whether it's a, an expansion, or whether it would be a new discharge, you know, this, there will be a lot of interest, I'm sure, of downstream for, you know, folks involved with Ensta River. But back to your point about where this is, so you've already gotten a letter from DEHAC, which indicates that they would proceed with a permit under these conditions. You've got to go through that process. The actual permit application is not made to date. What you need to, companion with this is an engineering report showing how you would design that particular facility at three and a half and five. What has happened also, because of the, the town's interest in, in even future growth beyond that possibly, is asking DEHAC about an expansion from, say, five to seven, you know, long-term. And so that request has been made to DEHAC, and DEHAC is hoping that, you know, sometime in August, with their response.
Why are you not using Horse Creek? That's in Aitken County. Why are you not using Horse Creek?
Because of the, the distance?
The distance to what?
The distance from the Aitken County park all the way to Horse Creek.
So Horse Creek has the capacity to take, take on this project?
Do they, no?
Oh, this, so you're not, so you're not going to say capacity, right?
It, it was, it, honestly, it, it's a cost thing, and it was.
They don't have the capacity, though, right?
Hmm, excuse me? I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything.
Horse Creek does not have the capacity for this project, correct?
Not at this time, correct.
Okay, and you know why they don't have the capacity? He just told you. Because, because they decided to take wastewater from farms, I believe, which raised havoc on their system.
Well, I, I do know that.
And they raised taxes, they raised the order of sewer bills on their, on Aitken County folks because they had to do the upgrades to, to the system. And we spent a week with the town council members from Aitken, who are not happy with this project at all.
Well, but how does that correlate?
Go ahead, you take. One, one simple question. Will this town be obligated to take a single gallon of waste prior to getting permitting to increase our capacity?
No, sir.
Okay, so everything is contingent upon the permitting process?
Yes, we understand that.
So you will withhold putting pipe in the ground?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay.
Oh, one hundred percent.
So if you do not get the permit, this project will, we will not be obligating any of our current capacity?
That is correct. Yes.
Yeah, we're not obligating any current capacity, and if it works out, we will gain eventually gallons of capacity for the town.
This letter he's talking about, he got, when did we get it?
Well, and, and I, I haven't seen that letter, but it's.
He hasn't seen it either.
Well, council hasn't seen it a lot.
It was originally, Tim, what was it, originally requested, like, a long time ago, and then DEHAC said, we want to update that wasteload allocation, because it was old, so we went ahead and re-released it.
Okay, we're, we're, we're talking about internal issues here, so it is, there seems to be a kink in the communications line, and that kink needs to be removed, and hopefully council will take that action.
But, but there will, no line will be put in the ground if your permit is not expanded. Definitely. What we are doing, as, as Mr. Hendricks alluded to, you know, an, an engineering report, as Jeff said, has to be submitted to DEHAC that says, hey, if we're going to expand our plan to three and a half or five, and what the intent would be is to go ahead, if we're going to ask for, we're going to ask for three and a half, and we're going to ask for five, right? And they'll both be in the permit. But an engineering report has to be submitted to say, this is how we will expand the wastewater treatment plant. These are the processes that will be included in that expansion to be able to meet those limits. That engineering report has to go in in order for them to expand the permit as well. So Jim Longshore has been, you know, working with the wastewater treatment plant, he's with Summit Engineering. He, he will be responsible for the PER under, you know, not the town paying for it, us, us handling the cost of that. And so that, that will, that will go in with the, with the permit request. Now, we do understand, and, and that is why we, we asked Jeff to be on this team, he understands the history of the town trying to expand the permit in the past. We, you know, we understand the friends of the F-train, and, you know, that, that is something that, that we will need to address as part of the permit.
Okay, I think we all agree that the sensitive issue is going to be typically increased.
I totally agree with you, yes.
Okay, are, are we, are you prepared to look at other options for dispersal of the affluent from the plant? There are other needs. Two hundred acres of pine trees will certainly take a few hundred thousand gallons per day, so.
That would take a few hundred gallons.
I'm sorry, Mary, how far you?
Yeah, we'll have to see, we, we may have to reevaluate. Or, you know, with Jeff and I discussed, it could be, you know, you may need a discharge pipe into further down the drainage area. But, you know, this is, we are at the beginning part of this project. The main thing here was that there's no cost to the town. You know, we, we are here to try and, you know, expand the MPS permit to higher flows, to allow for, not only for us to be able to connect to your system, which, you know, that's, that was the reasoning for the MOU and talking to Aitken County, and, and also to be able to provide the town with additional capacity at no, no cost. It will be funded. Can I tell you who's going to fund it? It may be EDA, maybe federal money, it may be state, you know, Department of Commerce money, but all of that, nothing is going to be put in the ground until, number one, there is a prospect industry, and then, number two, funding. The, the intent is to get this ball rolling now with knowing where the sewer will go to, design of that sewer line, expansion of, you know, knowing that we can expand the permit or not. And, you know, the main thing is, is that, you know, we feel it's a win for Region Two, for Batesburg Leesville, for Aitken County, for your municipality. You're the closest municipal entity to this proposed park, the closest, which, you know, I consider that to be a, a win from a growth standpoint. So.
Well, Betty's been waiting.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
My question is, my question is, Project Courtney, what's the connection of North Fort Commerce Park with Project Sun in Aitken County?
I'm not familiar with Sun, is that the, is that Ray, House Refrigerator?
Yes, there, the, and I apologize, Mr. Williams is not able to attend, he is out of town on, on a work, on work trip. The intention for this Commerce Park is not, you know, chicken processing plant.
Yes, because I know that's a problem situation.
Correct. Yes, you are correct, ma'am, yes. The intention for this park would be more high-tech jobs, manufacturing jobs, but not, not chicken processing.
But still, we're concerned with the race, and it's going to be dumped over there by Chick, Chick in Creek, that's going to bring, it's going to pose a problem again. Opinion that we got.
Understood, understood, and that, that is, we, we know that, we have to do that.
So in a nutshell, while his counsel being asked for beyond the memorandum of, of understanding, since we don't, we're not aware what's in there, so.
At the moment, this is just a.
Y'all, y'all have a. Did council authorize them to?
Yeah, eight, eight and a half in both.
The memorandum, right?
Yeah, so the memorandum was executed in March.
I thought I said we go to DEHAC.
Well, I, I think you were out of town, but, I mean, y'all voted eight and nothing, too.
We understand. We have faced this for years now. To do, to do what, though? What, what are they doing in, on our name? We have, council has no idea what she's talking about.
That's, that's what this meeting is about.
I understand, but she's already gone to DEHAC for PRE, they've already got some.
That came, you know, through staff, that they're going to pay for all of that, so they.
I understand, but did council approve us doing that?
Yes, the memorandum of understanding.
That we didn't see.
That we, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Well, and I'll forward that to you.
I have a question, I have a question. Anytime, anytime you're doing something for a town, and council is ran, running the town, and council is not informed of all these processes, then there's a problem.
We have an internal.
That's another internal issue you have, we can discuss later.
Yeah, so, so the purpose of, of Project Courtney discussion tonight is not, there's no vote or anything coming for Project.
Do you understand what we're saying?
I understand what you're saying. I also understand what Lisa is presenting, which is a phenomenal project, which will, which will benefit us in the industrial park, or excuse me, with the wastewater plant expansion.
No matter what council thinks, because you think since they could not hear.
I'm, I'm just telling you my professional opinion, and.
But it still needs to talk to us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We need to know what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely, and this is, this is the purpose of this meeting, is to update council.
Did you see it before you voted on it?
Did you?
No, no.
I don't either, but we've all got a copy of it now, I mean, this thing doesn't have to go.
So tonight, tonight is the update so that we're on the same page. And, again, this is going to expand our plant, we're going to add new customer base, we're going to add the economic development that is seven and a half miles, it's proflased to the, from Steve's district, right on the edge of town, seven and a half miles. You're the closest district, that, I just.
You know how I feel about this, so.
Well, I think it is a great opportunity for our community, for our citizens to get good paying jobs and stuff.
Is she guaranteeing good paying jobs? We can decide if it's a good idea or not, because just you saying it's a good idea, and we know nothing about it.
Well, and I agree with you, and that's why we're having this, this part of the session.
But we should have known before this.
I can't control the past, I can only control what, what's happening now, and, and, and I am trying to present all that information and be as transparent as possible. I see this as a great opportunity, we know, I know Ms. Barbara, her husband worked in Michelin for years, and that income, he brought it back in our community, spent it in our stores, our restaurants, and I see that happening with this industrial park, and we will see growth, it may not be a, a tax base that is in our, our area, but we will see revenue from the wastewater side, and then we will see benefits from our residents, which we are here to serve our residents and our citizens with more job opportunities in the community. We always talk about people moving away from town, they, they graduate high school and move away, and now we'll have high-tech jobs that are seven and a half miles from town, that they can live in Batesburg Leesville, drive down the road, don't have to deal with commuting traffic, don't have to drive to the hospital and all those, and they've got great paying jobs close by, and they live in Batesburg Leesville where they love the community. I see this win-win-win all the way.
I, I, and, and I, and I, and I know it, it's a very, you know, obviously sensitive subject and, and a topic that you all definitely need to discuss. I did run some numbers for you, based on the current sewer rate at one and a half million gallons a day, the annual revenue would be close to five point three million dollars in sewer revenue for the town, and, and obviously there's no debt service associated with that since the intent is funded.
The fact that currently we are processing household and commercial, basically commercial waste. Here we are going, there's not a large percentage of our waste classified as industrial waste, so those costs may go up in order per thousand, although it's a reference point.
Right, the town, the town does have an approved pre-treatment program in place with the state, with DEAC. That, that follows federal requirements, so the town already does have a pre-treatment program in place for any industries that are in it.
It says, it says to be provided.
Well, so this was added in, this presentation that's here is, is what was provided this week, well, yesterday. It seems like it's been a week ago, but it's yesterday at least. So, so this is, is Project Courtney, the North Fork Commerce Park. Again, Aiken County, we've got the memorandum of understanding.
So we'll get hard copies of this.
Yes. Do you want hard copy or you want, you know? I mean, if you want to print it out, it's not, I'm easy, I'm easy, so.
I, I want copies, I want to see this, and I want to, if my computer go out, I want to know I got this paper.
Yeah, we can take a little break between the work session, and I'll let Michael and Scott rearrange tables and chairs, and I can go print all of that for you, so you've got before we leave tonight, so, thank you guys for volunteering.
Coming up next, Jay, we're going to continue with the work session with wastewater treatment plant clarify.
Yeah, we're going to finish up, I, I think these last three or, or four are going to be fairly simple. We, we definitely front-loaded this. Y'all, y'all are welcome to stick around, you're welcome to go, does anybody have any other questions for our staff from Thomas and Hutton that is here? To talk about Project Courtney? If not, you know.
I do, why is it named Courtney?
You know why, it's somebody's daughter's name. It, it had, it was honestly, it was named like.
It was something odd.
It was something odd, and they decided to rename it, and it was, it is somebody's, somebody's daughter's name.
Those code names, like Sunny and everything, they just picked out a hat.
Yeah, so, so we don't really have to call it Project Courtney anymore.
We don't need to, no, it, it, it has been officially named North Fork Commerce Park.
All right, so if we don't have anything else for, thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, thank you, we're more than happy to provide, you know, if you need any additional stuff to provide to council, we just let you know, we'll send it to you.
I think if Jeff can shoot that, that letter from October, I'll pass that on. Y'all stop and get something on the way out of town, before you get to the town.
I know that Lissis isn't open, I already told you, I go there all the time, yeah, yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, so, moving on, the, the last few items are a lot smaller, we definitely front-loaded the, the project. Again, these are things we've already kind of touched on recently. We do have a CDBG grant that was just awarded, this is a twenty four, twenty five project. It is a valve study. The projected cost was five hundred and forty-four thousand four, forty-four, five hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. The award amount was just shy of four hundred thousand dollars. The purpose of that project is to provide the town with water infrastructure and asset condition assessment services that will better quantify and locate water infrastructure, primarily valves. Within the town's distribution system, this project is critical to addressing the needs of the town's drinking water system while mitigating the financial impact of it. This is really based off of where we've had two major water leaks over the last four or five years, that one drained the tanks, and the other one nearly drained the tanks. So, by doing this, we'll have a better mapping of the town's current infrastructure, some that is nearly a hundred years old, and we can assess the condition of all the valves, and moving forward, it will give us a roadmap to replacement of valves, what needs to be done, and better knowledge on how to isolate the town. Well, there have been numerous instances where they have gone to turn valves off, and they've broken, they're just old. So, that is the, the intent with that valve study. It has not been bid yet, it is just in the very early preliminary stages. Environmental through the cog is being conducted, even though we don't think there really is a.
Have any of these projects come before council, before you're talking about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars here?
So, so they've all been talked about as a, as a presentation.
Has it come for a expenditure approval?
None of these have been bidding, none of these have been, yeah, none of these have been. As I said, these are awarded projects, so, so that is a CDBG valve study. We also recently went back to CDBG due to some problems on the system, and sometimes they get money left over from other projects that gets returned, so we were able to get a mid-year award for the twenty-three, twenty-four year for sewer line replacement on South Oak Street, it had been that Liberty, that Ash Street, we've had numerous overflows, and this will address that problem. It will replace a section of water line, a two-inch galvanized line from Howard Street to Eddie Street's lower entrance on Maple Street. So it would go from a two-inch galvanized that has had leaks to a six-inch line. So that will benefit fire flow, and will also benefit those, those residents, and, and stop some of those leaks on Maple Street. This is right there, across from Twin City Park, next to Batesburg Cemetery. And then also water line replacement on North Peachtree Street between West Railroad Avenue and Gunner Street. And so, that area has had low flows, we've had issues with fire hydrant, with minimal. The fire department does not even catch that high degree of cause of its flood. So there's problems with that older line there, so this will replace that six-inch line. So that award amount was two hundred and ninety-nine thousand six seventy fifty-four cents. Projected cost is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand five ninety-four. Again, this is getting environmental through the cog right now, has not been bid. And so, I bounced over, I jumped over this one, sorry. Again, another RIA project, rural infrastructure, recently in May awarded a one billion dollar grant towards a clarifier expansion at the wastewater treatment plant. The projected cost is five billion, excuse me, one billion, I'm getting numbers tonight, one billion five hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars. So that project will construct improvements to the clarifier splitter box, the return sludge pump station, and the scum pump station, doesn't sound very appealing to me, at the wastewater treatment plant to improve operation and increase reliability. I don't know if Tim has any, I don't know if anybody needs, I don't know if we need more depth on that other than it will improve that, that in-process clarifier, but.
It, it will increase our capacity, but what it will do, we have some issues finding the regulated flows because we've got two different sides of clarifiers at the wastewater plant. So, and wastewater flows fluctuate during the day based on the diurnal demands of our water system. So we may see three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water per minute, I mean, per day, rate up to seven hundred, eight hundred thousand gallons per day. And what we ask the little box will do is it'll redefine our overflow weirs and say, better adjust that flow diverted to basin that's large enough to handle enough flow based on the design capacity, as well as it's too small of basin. So, and the scum pump is just a single pump, now that we have pumping at all time, we have five pass pumping, so it'll give us some redundancy there and improve that facility too, and what we're going to do is probably look at our overflow weirs. That's how we got in trouble with DEAC, was the top city issues was, of course, we had some bulking in our clarifier system because the, the flows are uneven, and the fact that the, the, once you change that flow, and they, they adjust them every day based on sludge blankets, and they can't keep up with the maintenance, so this will have to, because the wheel's going to be replaced everything we said in the same location, a lot more high probability issue.
It'll impact the outflow quality?
Yes, it should, because it'll be more consistent, more of a logic.
Okay, so you're not going to hit those.
And just kind of the recent wastewater treatment plant improvements, we just finished the liquid chemical feed, which that was a CDBG grant. A couple of years ago, we did the floating narration and rehab the basins, those were CDBG projects as well. We did the digester tank and also some headwork improvements, which was another RIA grant. If you recall, there was a four million dollar bond that paid for the, the matches and paid for other things along with taking on that debt service from the industrial park, so.
And we have, we're going to convert the wastewater plant to solar power?
There's, I've not all that, maybe, there's been some grant letting somebody sent to put solar to assist us?
Yes.
And then whatever, we're not using, we just go back in the grid to some extent, but it will help us.
Getting one point, two million, one point.
We've had some conversations, and actually, we have a conversation with the company tomorrow.
We'll re-announce, Jordan.
Yeah, so this will be kind of the federal plan if, if it was come through, but it's just very preliminary conversation. Wastewater point?
Now we need to talk about the solar panels for this, the fire stations, and judicial system.
We'll, we'll work on that one in a different work session, we'll, we'll stay focused on the, on the water, wastewater. We got it off on the agenda tonight. So, the last thing I wanted to touch base with you, we've hit big numbers, and they've gotten smaller and smaller, so now we're down to the smallest amount we can talk about. This is really more of a, a day-to-day operation that will be beneficial to our, our citizens. The express bill pay for utility payments. Currently, we use public software for all of our work, so that includes our utility bill pay functions. We do take credit card payments and online payments, but it's not an automated system. The system we use is called Q Bill Pay, which is public with a Q, they've got to get cute with all the Q stuff. So they are phasing out Q Bill Pay and going to Express Bill Pay. We could remain with the Q Bill Pay for a little longer, but they're encouraging us to shift it over to Express Bill Pay. So this will allow us to all for the following, recurring auto bank drafts, recurring credit card, debit card payments, online bill display, mobile payment, pay by text, and then also customers will have tech support available as well. So, currently, you don't have the auto bill, auto bank draft option, this would allow that. So, a couple of different options, the, the bank draft, it's all designed to be revenue neutral. The customer pays two dollars of the transaction amount, and this has changed from the, from Friday. We updated with a recent conversation. So, so this one wasn't spelled out in the, the official one, but customer will pay two dollars for each transaction. There's also a fifty-nine cent charge, the pound would be charged, but this would be offset by the person going to papers. So we wouldn't have the, the postage of sending out the bill, it would all be electronic. For some customers, they get two bills a month, but they're not paying on time. So this would be offset with savings on the postage, we actually would come out a little bit good on each one. So the, the customer would be able to go pay to us. There is also a, a customer safety measure, you can set up a, a maximum amount for your account. So maybe your sixty, seventy dollar water bill range, you can set a hundred dollars as your max. If you had some exorbitant bill come through, you would get a notification that you, you know, you've got a higher bill you need to check.
So what does it actually cost to send out a bill today? I know standard postage is now up to seventy.
I think seventy-four is now.
Seventy-four, but we don't pay that.
We're paying closer.
We pay bulk, sorted, pre-sorted bulk rates?
We, we're paying in like the sixty-nine cent range, I believe, that is, that is also cost, you know, there, that cost includes their printing, their mailing, it's not just, I think it's about sixty-nine, seventy cent for a customer.
Okay, so it's a very positive savings.
Yes, it, it definitely.
Over three thousand customers, if you get ten percent, you're still saving more money.
Yes.
Is this going to be optional for this?
It is optional.
Okay.
If you don't want to do it, you're still able to come to the front window and.
But there are some people who would not do.
There'll be a lot of people that would choose not. My mother will never see this, I can guarantee, she'll, she'll, she'll drive up, she'll drop it in the drop lines. But, but this is an option, I know that everything I do, huh, changes, some people just don't want to do it. I will, I will be the one that'll sign up because, you know, I'm willing to pay two dollars for that convenience, so. There's also the credit debit card option, this one is not as economical, but you could set it up as a transaction with your credit card. It would still have that three percent, same as you pay at the front, you'd be paying three percent. And then there's a sixty-five cent per transaction that can be billed to the customer. Town, we might would dangle that carrot of, you know, the town pays that sixty-five cent and get an offset if they were wanting to do that. That would be something council decides, and, and then, again, same thing applies there, they can go online, do paperless, they can also set up their safety limit, so a maximum amount that they would get charged.
A quick question.
Yes.
The notification, when, when is, whenever is the solics, really, how would it go after the.
So, my understanding of the system is you would get an email with your, your bill. You also would have an online portal that you could go to, that you could log in and, and see your, your account history and see.
For the people who are not tech savvy, what?
Well, if, if you, if it not takes avenue. Well, they would still get the paperless bill. If, if you don't want to change, nothing changes. We'd still mail out the bill, and you could still pay by cash or check.
Just a question.
Oh, absolutely, but if you're willing to do this, go paperless, you would get email notification, you can also get text notifications and things like that.
But you would have to sign up?
Yes.
In order to know if you're going to do it or not?
Absolutely, nobody would be automatically signed up, no, no choice.
So they would have, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
They'll have a notification in their bill, possibly?
So, my understanding is, if, yeah, yeah, we would definitely send out something in their bill that would, you know, send them to that website to, to get sent over.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
So this auto pay or auto draft, whatever, or the back to pay per month, would that not waive some of the fees that you're talking about, three percent?
So, yes, if you do the bank draft, you don't have to pay a percentage, it would just be a transaction, two dollars per transaction.
Unless your bank charges you an ACH.
Right.
Some banks do have an ACH.
But it still would be the two dollars.
Yeah, so they would have two dollars.
An express bill is simply paperless with the ability to pay by. And express bill is simply, uh, paperless with the ability to pay by credit or debit and not ACH, so there's synonymous, uh, essentially.
All right. Um, so from our side, the cost commitment, again, this is the small potatoes of tonight. Uh, the setup charges for the town will be sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. It's a eleven hundred dollar initial setup configuration development. Again, we already utilize, uh, public software, so that would be a minimal charge. Uh, we would have to pay to fly somebody here from Salt Lake City, uh, so there will be airfare, two nights of hotel that we'd be paying. That's, that's variable. And then five hundred and fifty dollars for that one day, onsite eight-hour training for our staff. So, it's sixteen fifty plus airfare and two nights. I might want to fly back to Salt Lake City, but, um, but, um.
Is your wife home?
Uh, absolutely. She would definitely go to be back in Utah, so. Um, and the timeframe to implement, um, is eight weeks, and so, uh, what I'm recommending is we bring this to a vote at the August twelfth council meeting, and, uh, I would love to say we implement this by mid-October. We can get that paperwork signed and, and get that implemented in October. Does anybody have more questions about? Again, this one, this is kind of catching us up to the twenty-first century, so. At Joint Municipal, I assume y'all have similar kind of program already in place?
We're about to change it again. I don't think about technology.
All we're saying. Okay, so, let's take a quick break. I will go print out Project Courtney information for you.
We'll actually need to, are we going to adjourn the work session?
Yeah, so, yes, yes, you, you've got to do that, that's right.
So, you just have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second. First.
By Mr. Prowse, and a second by Mr. Hall.
Without objection, we are adjourned from our work session.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, welcome and thank you again to staff for the, uh, switch over, uh, very quick, efficient, thank you so much. Um, we recall the special council meeting to order. Again, it is still July thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-four, Batesburg, Leesville, Town Council. Um, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of agenda.
So, vote.
Mr. Balknight?
Second.
Can I give a message, Mr. Prowse?
Yes.
Um, any discussions? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District votes yes.
Four? Five? Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, motion carries. Um, new, new business is letter of commitment for the use of the excess, excess funds for system two. Again, this is town of Batesburg, Leesville commits that we provide funding for all construction costs, credit and fund the project beyond the skip grant reward for all non-construction costs, um, including in general, admitting an acquisition rate per project. This is local funding for construction, cost, uh, projected at one point, it's a sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. These are the funds that are currently available for, for use from our utility account. And, so I'm looking for a motion to.
Mr. Mount, will they, uh, be tabled this?
I have a motion from Mr. Kane to table. And I have a second by Ms. Mitchell. To table District one?
No.
District two?
No.
District three?
District votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
No.
And district six?
No.
District seven?
No.
District eight?
No.
And mayor votes no, motion fails. Do I have a motion to adopt the letter of commitment?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the letter of commitment with the amendment that we remove, uh, that we have a single contact point, that, that be the town manager, so that all the information can be distributed to counsel as it is received. Uh, the motion is to have a single contact for the information.
So, paper moving mayor's contact information.
The mayor is another member of.
Which, which is, which is acceptable. Teddy had signed it by himself for the system, so that's, that's acceptable by the RIA.
RIA will accept.
RIA will accept.
So, the, uh, motion of a second?
Now, clarification on the motion. It is to remove him as a contact point.
So, that last sentence of the.
Last sentence. No, not his signature authority, but last signature.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Hartley, um, any discussion? District one?
No.
District two?
Yes.
Wait, who's telling me that?
District one, make your, make a decision, Natalie.
Yes.
Okay, district two?
Yes.
District three?
District votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, motion carries. Um, at this time, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So, move. I'm sorry.
I have a first by Mr. Prowse, and a second by Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Uh, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five? Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, uh, we are in executive session, thank you. At this time, I would, uh, entertain a motion to return from special council meeting to regular session.
So.
Ms. Hartley, and a second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five? Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, we are back in regular session. Uh, possible actions by council in follow-up to executive session. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
I move that we, uh, adopt, approve the, uh, contract as presented in executive session for the, um, Intergent Defense Attorney.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yeah.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Hall to adjourn, and I have a second by Mr. Wise, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District votes no.
And four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes. Serious.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Making fun of me.
Yes.
Thank you, and mayor votes yes, we are adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, change staff, thank you. Scott, we.